Having just turned seven o'clock, being the appointed hour, I will call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Urbana City Council to order and request that the Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
So initially, let me request if there are any additions to the agenda that were desired from anybody.
Just one change to acknowledge that you're chair in the meeting today officially on the agenda.
Yes, and so just for the public record, I expected not to be here, but by a combination of American Airlines and the weather, my travel plans were demolished, and so I am here, and since this was my time in the rotation, I'll chair the meeting, and Ms. Ammons will be up in two weeks. So are there any staff reports that should be heard at this time? Ms. Tyler.
I'm sorry, we didn't move the agenda or the -- are we going to move the agenda officially? You don't have to move the agenda?
We typically don't do that.
In your packet, it should have been your first bimonthly report on failure to comply violations. I'm just pointing that out. The increased penalties seem to be having an effect on cutting down on the number of tickets, and so you'll see that we just have two that are outstanding at this point, and those have been moved into the collection process. The violations themselves have been corrected. Questions?
Ms. Marlin?
Just wanted to say thank you for this report, and it's wonderful to see that last column with every single violation corrected, so thank you.
Thank you.
So are there any other comments or questions? If not, I'll just interject one other thing. It does seem to me, I remember that we had discussions, and I, in my inexperience, may have been on the -- may not have understood the issue as well as you did, because you assured us that you can't fund a position on fines, because if -- and so if the violate -- because the violations are not a steady income stream, and I'm delighted, I'm absolutely delighted that my suspicions on that were wrong, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other staff report that -- okay, so let's move to approval of the minutes of previous meeting.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? In that case, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
No? All right, I'm not voting no. Are there any nays? And now, now we move to public input. I have just one request for public input, Mr. Andrew Scheinman. So you have five minutes.
I was not on.
Oh, it works when I turn it on.
Is it working? Yeah.
Yeah, and yours is working fine.
And as long as my lips aren't frozen, it should be fine. So this is a quick plug for economic development in Urbana. Today, the University of Illinois presented a report on further commercialization of U of I technology above, beyond, and in addition to the excellent work already being done at the U of I's Research Park. I'm particularly interested in this because I'm what you might call a Midwestern sea turtle. I grew up here, my father taught engineering here, I got my undergraduate degree here, I went to other places, and now I find myself returning because of the opportunities here in technology and entrepreneurship. I was fortunate enough to get a pre-release of the report that was presented today. It's excellent and thought-provoking, and it proposes three areas of commercialization in this area, in this region, in computation, in biomedicine and bioengineering, and in energy applications. The proposal summarizes a huge opportunity for our region, by which I mean Champaign and central Illinois broadly, as well as Urbana, which is why I'm here tonight, and it's obviously a town that's particularly near and dear to me. I came out tonight in this particularly delightful weather to say that I hope that this report is followed up on by the city of Urbana. I hope it's followed up on by all of the cities in the region, but Urbana in particular, because it's an opportunity for brick-and-mortar projects that will extend entrepreneurship, create jobs, and create a broader ecosystem than the ecosystem that already exists, created by the University of Illinois in the park, an excellent, excellent accomplishment, I should say, with Laura Freericks as director, the companies there, and the University of Illinois faculty and students. What I would really press Urbana to do is to read the report and to look to see and think hard about how it can do some of the specific proposals that the report calls for. The report calls for developments in computation, biomedicine, and energy. Urbana, as a biomedical hub, already has two hospitals. I don't know whether you can put brick-and-mortar in to support those, but biomedicine certainly has a place for Urbana. Urbana downtown is already seeing further development of technologies, companies. Pixo is there, Colab has just opened. I should add that I'm actually doing business consulting in Colab, so I'm not completely unbiased, but there's a huge opportunity here. There's a huge opportunity for the whole region, there's a huge opportunity to work with the university, and there's a huge need for Urbana to step up to the plate and propose, soon, I hope, what it can do. You know, I hope the region opens up and extends what the university has done, I hope that the region supports, supplements, and supplants, in some cases, what the university has done, and I have returned here, see all the stuff that's going on, and I really hope that Urbana takes on a very active role in this, so thank you for your time.
So, yeah, I, there may be people who have either comments or questions, so yes, Diane.
Who authored this report, and when will it be available?
Okay, so the, I believe that the, my knowledge is inexact, but the university has now got an economic outreach office. I believe a number of years ago, the university committed to economic development as well as to education, and that's fantastic. I think it may have been the director of the park, Laura Freericks, who was involved in commissioning this report, which was to determine how the university might further extend the technology development that it's doing. The report was executed by an outside consultant, it was presented today, it's based on the consultant's analysis and her conversations with a number, quite a few individuals in the community who would be stakeholders.
I can add a little bit to that. They, the, there was a consultant brought in by the group, Carol Kraus-Lawfer, with the Business Cluster Development Group from Manlo Park, California. Libby sent around a link to this report just a few minutes, just a few minutes before the council meeting started. I'm fourteen pages into it, read the executive summary, it's pretty good, it gives us some really good ideas, and a number of city staff, Mike Munson and myself, attended a presentation today by the consultant and Laura on this. I know that campus is taking this pretty seriously, and there are some real opportunities that can come from this, especially in the three identified areas.
So the, one of the conclude, I mean, my take on it is that the overall conclusion is that the university and the park are doing a fantastic job, but there's a huge obligation, necessity, and benefit to involving the region, and I've seen that. I actually am also in New York State, in New York City, and in Rochester, New York, and I've seen this over and over and over again where economic development and jobs occur when an academic undertaking occurs in the rich context of the region. And so this is a very specific proposal that leverages, the proposal for technologies to be developed, and again, I'm, I am not the source of this information, and I would hardly wish to recite what Laura Freericks or someone else would be the direct fountainhead of knowledge, but that biomedical engineering, computation, and energy are three things at which the technologies in this region excel, at which the university and Parkland and the rest are very adept, and that this is something that I think Champaign and Urbana and all the other, you know, the whole region should embrace and vigorously push forward so that we're not just asking what can the U of I do for us, but rather what can we do with the U of I?
Maybe I can ask a question. Who would be the critical people at the university to approach? You said the report was written, or primarily by an outside consultant, but should we talk to the chancellor, for example, or the vice chancellor for research, or all of the above? Where should we start?
Well, I have to say that I used to be very academic, and now I survive by killing my own food, as it were, which is why I'm as thin as I am. I really think Urbana should start by considering, if Urbana had a blue-sky opportunity to see new businesses come into the city, and to look to see what could stimulate growth, what could stimulate people moving here, what would Urbana, what are the particular things that Urbana offers to fit in with these regional, within these regional proposals? And I would go to the university, I mean, frankly, I would probably start by talking to Ms. Freericks, because she's one of the leading, or the chancellor, but I would start by having Urbana really consider a strong position on what Urbana intends to do. I think Urbana, from what I can tell, and Charlie can correct me, has taken a big step in that direction by supporting Colab and some of this other growth in Urbana, in downtown Urbana, but that the university, as big and as far-thinking as it is, does not have all the answers, and I, frankly, I wouldn't put them in the position of having that control, and I mean that in the best possible way.
Okay. Yeah, Libby?
Just to add to that, we have begun meeting, we've had at least one meeting with Laura Freericks, Mike DiLorenzo, and some other folks from Public Engagement, Mayor Pressing, Tom Carino, Mike Munson, and myself, and Bill Gray, to some extent, to begin to talk about some of these opportunities, and just some of the concerns that we've had in Urbana, and so this was a nice outgrowth of an earlier conversation before the holidays, and we do have good open communication, so to answer your question, I think Mike DiLorenzo and Laura Freericks are two people that we've begun to work with more closely.
Diane?
Will UC2B be developed to the point where it can play a role in whatever the recommendations of this report are?
So that's an interesting, see, I would be-
That would be my first question, that's certainly the advantage that we-
I would be more than happy to help the city, because I was not born, but at least bred here. My own feeling about UC2B is that it requires some thought. For example, I have talked to people who've said that they would have loved to locate in Urbana, but there was no high-speed internet, high enough speed, but on the other hand, you know, there's a possibility, I mean, the goal is not to replace what's going on in the park unless it's appropriate, so if a company has its servers located in the park and office space in Urbana, that's still a win. I don't, I don't myself know who would say that UC2B is a critical precursor to moving to Urbana. I'm sure it would help, but I don't know how long it would, to step back, I would not, I would say that however long UC2B takes, it should be pushed for, but there are lots of other things that can be done in the interim, so.
So one of the things, I guess I'll enter into a discussion here, because we can never talk outside of the public, but the, so maybe, maybe a next round, if we have an opportunity for, of tax increment financing, should be tech increment financing. The, that is, it should be focused on, on building, you know, on building this partnership. We don't have any money, but through, but with, you know, tax increment financing provides a way to leverage support that, and Charlie is, I'll recognize you in a moment, Charlie, to say out loud what you're muttering, but the, you know, of course, it's inherent in tax increment financing that you're making a bet that your tax rolls will appreciate because of the, because of the investment that you're making, and, but life is a gamble. This seems to me to be a gamble where, you know, the odds, I mean, if it seems as though the, you know, the climate emanating, you know, the climate emanating from the university is sufficiently nurturing, it seems to me that that might be a gamble worth taking.
Yeah.
It's the only way we can put any resources in, is do it with basically other people's money to start with.
I can tell you from my own experience, having lived here in Rochester, New York, in Raleigh, North Carolina, in Chicago, in Seattle, eh, too many places, that if everybody steps up to the plate, I think fantastic things can be accomplished, and so the fact that the university is going out of its way to make this a public, basically a public offering, I think is phenomenal, and I hope that Urbana gets involved, I hope that Champaign gets involved, I hope that, you know, upstate New York is funny, because I was thinking, is Urbana central Illinois, or east-central Illinois, which seems to be the new thing, upstate New York, you have Buffalo, which is western New York, and then you have Rochester, which is 100 miles away, which is central, west-central, you know, the siloization will kill everyone, and so I hope that the whole region responds to this, and that it's the U of I, it's the hospitals, it's Parkland, because I think there's huge potential here, so.
Mr. Smythe?
Well, TIF has some specific requirements in terms of dealing with blight and underdeveloped areas, so I'm not sure how that would play out, and Tom Carino and others who know TIF stuff could probably address that. You know, the kind of economic development we want to do is a bit different. It would call for, you know, literally investing and some economic farming-type approaches might be in order. As to UC2B, I see it as a traction to bring talent to this community, so if we have UC2B everywhere, we can attract people who want to live here. And then one of the things this report talks about is a lack of second tier. If a company wants to move to expand its, if it wants to expand, it needs managerial staff, it needs chief technology officers, it needs, you know, MBA talent-type people, upper-level management. If you want to attract people like that to this community, we either need to grow more of our own, or bring them in from other communities, so UC2B has a role there in making this a more attractive community to live in. We need UC2B in downtown Urbana. We don't have enough high-speed running through downtown, down Main Street. There is no cheap way to get on UC2B, and we need that. So that might be a TIF investment that we might be able to do. You know, just run TIF down Main Street so that people can connect up to it.
Mr. Smythe, would you like to take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair.
I've been admonished by Clerk Clark that I shouldn't engage in debate while I'm in the chair.
Okay, well.
So, the, oh, I'm sorry, Ms.--
Go ahead, Andrew.
No, I just wanted to thank you for your time, and thank you for the questions, and I wish Urbana success, thank you.
Okay, Eric.
Yeah, no, I guess I was going to say something like what was just said. It may not be too much of an investment, for, given the rewards, and maybe in partnership with the university, maybe we could support running high-speed internet from the campus, from the engineering end of the campus, to downtown Urbana, and--
No, we already have UC2B down the street. It's at the school building. We just don't have it coming up race through downtown. It's at the courthouse, you know, this, yeah.
Well, whichever is the, whichever is the most, but I mean, I guess what I'm saying, whichever is the most economical to, you know, maybe we can make that investment, if we have to borrow money to, you know, buy bonds to make the investment, but that would be a terrific investment.
Yeah, we need to loop. Carol?
I just want to thank Mr. Andrew for his report, Scheinman, for his sharing the report, and perhaps we can put this item on an agenda on the Committee of the Whole to further discussion, once we all get a chance to look at the report.
Okay. Do we, do we need a motion for that, or do you just sort of, okay, okay, so count on it. So, the next item of business is the Market at the Square annual report.
Andrew, as you deal with the weather, think of this as the Rochester of the Midwest. At least in Rochester, we'd get several feet of snow. I used to live in Rochester, by the way, so.
Somewhere I know I can make this bigger. There we go. Good evening, I am Natalie Kenny-Marcas, I am the Director of Urbana's Market at the Square, and the Marketing Coordinator for the City of Urbana. I'm happy to be here tonight and talk to you about Urbana's Market at the Square, what went well, what we can improve upon this season, and share some exciting things that happened this year. It's kind of hard to think about the farmer's market when it's so cold outside, but farmers' markets are an important part of the urban farm linkage, and continue to rise in popularity doing, due to growing consumer interest in obtaining farm-fresh products. Last year, the United States Department of Ag listed more than 8,000 farmers' markets in their directory. That's a nearly 40% increase over the past 10 years, and just like the national statistics, our market here in Urbana also continues to grow. A total of 158 vendors participated in the market last season, which is slightly up from the year before, when we saw 152 vendors, and weekly vendor attendance at the market last year averaged about 79 vendors, and that also is up from the previous year and the year prior. And I thought I would share that the market dates at the highest vendor attendance were July 13th, where we saw 93 vendors, and August 10th, where we saw 96 vendors. Those were very crowded days at the market. So as some of you know, we separate our vendors into two categories, growers and non-growers. Growers, which totaled 52 of the 158 approved vendors, include fresh fruit and vegetable producers, meat and dairy producers, fresh flower producers, and live plant producers, and then non-growers are subcategorized as processed and prepared food vendors, and art and craft vendors. The processed and prepared food vendors included about 45 of the 158 approved vendors last year, and we further break those down into, to include bakers, candy makers, ice cream vendors, and other prepared foods designed to be consumed at the market or off-site. Art and craft vendors included about 61 of our 158 approved vendors. They're the other component of the non-grower category, and those are artisans and crafters who produce items such as photography, clothing, woodworking, pottery, and more. In the pie chart on the screen, you can see that art and craft vendors remain our vendor category with the highest number of participants. Moving on from vendors, the next group of market participants are the community groups, which are a valuable resource for our community, both for the groups publicizing their efforts and for patrons looking for a way to contribute, volunteer, and engage in Urbana and Champaign. Community groups are located in Row 5, which is the easternmost row along Vine Street, and there are no plans to change the location of community groups coming up in 2014. Last year, we averaged about 10 community groups, occupying upwards of 27 spaces per week. Community group participation was down a little bit from 2012, as noted in the chart up there. A total of 71 community groups participated last year, which is slightly down again from Performers are another important component of the market experience. Last year, we had performers playing everything from folk and bluegrass to indie rock, and we had a harpist, a face painter, and other traditional busking. We even had a performer roll out a full-sized upright piano to the market to play for a day, which was fantastic. As you can see up there on the chart, we had 38 performers registered to busk at the market, just down a little bit from the year before. Every market, market staff does a count to estimate the patron attendance, and that held steady last year. We estimated that over the course of the 27 weeks, we had about 124,000 visitors. If you average that out, that's about 4,600 people per weekend, which is pretty steady with the year before, where we estimate about 49 patrons per Saturday. Our peak season is roughly July, August, and September, and those continue to draw the biggest crowds. On a side note, this past year, we started for the first time an informal end-of-season patron survey, and I included that in the report. The survey was comparable to what other farmers' markets complete at the end of the season, and we had 90 people respond to the survey, which was only promoted on Facebook and Twitter using a free survey tool online. A few items worth noting, 85 of the respondents from that survey were female, 66% of the respondents say they attended the market every week to most weeks, 90% of the respondents come to the market to grocery shop, and almost as many to support local business. We continue to bring the market's identity to the public in a variety of ways, using traditional and not-so-traditional marketing. We make sure that all of the market's materials are consistent in terms of font use, and the market's mark, or the chicken, or rooster, or entire family of chickens there, and we also try to use a little bit of humor, because everyone seems to enjoy that. We keep our marketing momentum going through weekly promotions on radio, TV, and online, and to save some time this evening, I've included a link on our webpage, so you can see some of those promotions if you happen to miss them on TV and radio this past season, and that's urbanelinois.us/market. But I wanted to quickly highlight a couple of our promotions. Each week, we work closely with UP-TV to produce a short segment on the farmer's market called Market Menu. Some segments are really short, others are really lengthy, depending on how chatty I am that weekend if I invite guests to participate in the discussion. Some guest appearances from last year included Charlie Smythe to talk about bike-to-market, our Public Arts Coordinator, Sprouts at the Market Coordinator, and Eastern Illinois Food Bank to talk about one of our partnerships last season. We've also tried to forge some new partnerships with local media, so that we can really get the word out about the market to a broader audience. One of the new partnerships we created last year is with a radio DJ who talked regularly on her market radio, or on her radio show about the market, and she even started a blog called The Market and Michelle, her name is Michelle. She had lunchtime giveaways, and folks could call in to either win a gift certificate or a basket of prizes. All of that was offered by the vendors. They didn't have to participate, but they were excited to do that. We had over 35 vendors participate in that new promotional opportunity, and gave away everything from meat packages, to baked goods, to woodworking and jewelry. This past year, we also started a weekly email called Market Mail, and I'll show that to you really quickly. In case you don't subscribe, you can subscribe at urbanelinois.us/market. I plug that as often as I can. So Market Mail is sent weekly to subscribers. In the first year alone, we had over 660 subscribers to this. It said information about what's coming up at the market that weekend, the following weekend. You could search for vendors, search for products, check the weather, connect with us on Facebook, and then I would give a little glimpse into what's in season, and we had a map, too, so that went pretty well. And we're looking for more subscribers this season as the word gets out. We continue to work with the Eastern Illinois Food Bank as part of our partnerships. Quite a few years ago, the Farm to Food Bank program was created, and it encourages the donation of local produce by our growers, and last year, we had over 11,000 pounds of produce donated to the food bank by participating vendors. It's a optional participation, and then the food bank distributed it to their agencies and programs, and to their clients, and last-- And last year, for the first time, we started a Buy One Donate One event with the food bank, and this prompted patrons to purchase two items at the market, keeping one for themselves and donating the other item, and that went very well. We worked closely over this past season and continue to with the Urbana Business Association. We created a promotional postcard that highlights the three farmer's markets in Urbana: Market at the Square, Holiday Market, and Middle Market. This program, or the postcard, was distributed at many events, and we even distributed it to a few thousand students on campus through a unique student-to-student flyer distribution service we stumbled upon through Line-I Media. The UBA and the Market also worked with UPTV to produce a short video on year-round market shopping, and you can find that on the city's homepage. So I've shared with you some of our promotions this, from this past season, but I also want to bring attention to our online presence. Last year, when I gave the report for the market, we had about 4,700 likes on Facebook, and we're well over 6,000 this week. Facebook is imperative for the market. It's a great marketing tool. Folks love the photos and updates that we post, and it's a great free way to bring attention to the market. The same with Twitter. We've had over 1,000 new followers in the past year, and I love that the Twitter community will check in at the market, talk about what they buy, and tweet at us directly. It's fantastic. It's free, and we also try to use the hashtag #eatlocal and #shoplocal, because that will pull us up on Twitter searches. Sprouts at the Market is a, a great program that, it's a nutrition farm linkage programming for young children. It's in its sixth season, going on seventh season, and it provides kids a chance to taste fresh and in-season produce, receive nutrition information about the foods, and then learn about the farmer-producer that grew that food. Last year, we had six events, and we averaged about 70 participants, with May's event drawing over 100 participants, and overall feedback was great. We are working on new themes for this season, which we hope will boost attendance and provide an even better time for the kids and their families. And the event is free, by the way. Another great free event is Art at the Market. For the last five seasons, the Public Arts Commission has supported free arts workshops at the market. Last year, we had five of those, in addition to Performance at the Market, which featured free performances by local groups. Both Art at the Market and Performance at the Market were very well-attended last year with over 800 participants, and that's up from 600 the year before. So last season, the market phased out the credit debit portion of our Market Scratch System. The phase-out did not affect the market's capability for accepting link cards on behalf of market vendors. At the recommendation of our Finance Department, we determined that the credit debit tokens consumed a lot of time and administration, administrative time to process and print the checks to vendors and to reconcile all the transactions necessary to control and have a secure token system. There are equipment rental fees, transaction fees, and other costly annual service charges. So last season, the market was able to cut these types of expenses by accepting only link cards as opposed to credit debit and link. We received little negative feedback from patrons. In terms of vendor feedback, we also received very few complaints, and many vendors began accepting credit debit cards on their own through the use of Square or other similar devices. Last year, the market was again awarded with a grant from Link Up Illinois. That was in the amount of $4,000, and the grant was very successful. It doubled the value of link purchases up to $20 each Saturday. It took us almost, just at 11 weeks, to exhaust the entire grant. So as a result of the Link Up grant funding in the amount of $4,000, that added additional link tokens that were distributed to patrons and circulated into the market, and for a grand total of $14,327 in link tokens being distributed last season. It's down a little bit from the year before, but we had the same number of transactions in 2012 as we did in 2013. And last but not least, the real nitty-gritty of the market, our financials here. Primary expenditures for the market last year included marketing, supplies, and administration. Overall expenses for the market last year totaled $86,671. This is an increase of over, a little over $10,000 from the year before. The increase is due primarily to an additional $10,000 spent on marketing and promotion this past season and to cover an increase in the city's administration charge. Each season, the market reimburses the city's general fund with a flat amount for these overhead costs, and the administration reimbursement charge was increased from the last year due to a rise in operating costs and the use of additional staff time to assist with market tasks. Expenditures related to Market Day staff are expected to remain steady moving forward. Expenditures related to general fund administrative reimbursement are scheduled for review with the city's comptroller, but are expected to continue to rise to accommodate the increasing cost of services. Market revenues in 2013, including inspection fees, vendor fees, charges for electricity use, and sale of market merchandise, which are t-shirts and tote bags, which sold very well last year, by the way, totaled $76,854. As you can see on the chart on the screen, this is an increase of over $5,000 from the year before. Overall, for last season, expenses exceeded revenue by approximately $10,000. As I noted before, this is primarily due to increased marketing and promotion and an increased administration charge. As the increased administration charge and increased marketing efforts were expected, the total expenses of $86,720 were within the approved budget. So as we look ahead, I want to share a couple of items that are currently under consideration by staff. We're in the process of reviewing the market's advertising dollars to maximize our return on investment. We plan to continue to work closely with vendors to encourage improved onsite marketing practices, and we're in the process of planning an instructional workshop all about the ins and outs of sampling with the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, so that vendors can use sampling as a means for promotion. We're working on a seating project with the help of the Public Works Department and input from the Market's Advisory Board. We hope to have an enhanced seating area for our patrons located possibly in the northeast and possibly southeast corners of the market. And lastly, we look forward to the addition of vendors selling packaged beer, wine, and spirits at the market this season, and thanks again to council for approving this new license, which will allow this to happen. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I hope to see you all in about 95 days when we kick off the 35th season of Urbana's Market at the Square.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
Natalie, just to touch on the, the credit card, the Square PayPal approach to, to, would it help to have wireless at the market on Saturdays to, to let even more people get on? I know that, you know, like, I, I do PayPal with my iPod. Or iPad, I should say, but my iPad doesn't have a cell connection, so I have to have a wireless connection. So anybody using that kind of approach, would it be beneficial to have wireless so that we could have more?
Obviously, I'm, I'm going to say yes. I think it would be beneficial. I know a lot of folks out there already, already use it with their, their phones or their iPads and haven't had any issue with connecting, connecting somehow. I know some days, there's a faint signal across the street from over here, but of course, it would be lovely to have that out there.
Yeah, I'd, I would like, you know, I was just wondering if, if vendors are, you know, if they're just basically using their cellphones to get through. I, that, that's a, you know, you can create a wireless hotspot. I, I was just wondering if, if there is a need so that all the vendors can have access.
Right. I'll know more this season. One of the questions on the vendor's application is, do you accept credit or debit cards yourself at your space? So then I'll have a better idea of who is accepting it out at the market and.
Well, the follow-up question would be, if there were wireless,
Right.
would that enable you to, yeah?
It's not too late to add it on there. Applications don't go out until next week, so.
Okay.
I will make a note.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Dennis?
Thanks so much. I think we really appreciate the fact that the market has been a huge success for the downtown. It's a, it helps define the uniqueness of Urbana in many ways. I appreciated you, the inclusion of the many comments that, several pages of comments from surveys that you took. Very interesting range of topics that were brought up that had to do with, you know, people's impressions of the market and ideas to improve it and all that. I think what, what I've noticed at the market, and I guess one of the questions I want to ask as a possible, something to think about developing, is, has to do with the, the range of shoppers and the diversity of shoppers with different income levels that, that go to the market. Some of the, some of the things I've noticed is that, while the quality is really high and excellent, and we of course have a high perspective for natural and organic foods at the market, which is very excellent, I've noticed that you don't see very many people at the market who might be considered maybe from the low-income sections of the, of our community. And I'm wondering about things that could happen at the market that could encourage a larger range of shoppers to be drawn to the market. I had talked, you know, earlier to you a little bit about, you know, whether at the end of the market, which is something I've noticed at the Eastern Market in Detroit, that at the end of the day, of course, it's a longer day. It's until like 4 o'clock in the afternoon. The, the, the farmers who've brought the produce in, they don't want to take it home, so they discount their wares. So, and I understand that it's up to each individual seller to determine whether they're going to do that or not. And it hasn't seemed to really happen here, although there are opportunities then to donate things to the food bank, which is acceptable. It would seem to me that, that there could be a larger community interest if there was a program discussed, at least, you know, in the, the Market Board about, you know, last half-hour discounting of, of items, or if there could be opportunities for, you could call, slightly damaged or weathered fruits and vegetables that would come also to the market, maybe had been bumped or jostled in shipment or something like that, to be offered also as a markdown table by various vendors. And I know that I've taken advantage at times of purchasing tomatoes that were considered seconds, because maybe there are blemishes on them, and not every single tomato that's grown is perfect. So it offers people who are, who want to be more careful shoppers with their, with their income to still participate in the market, but they have more of a range, and they can feel perhaps that they can find bargains at the market that I think is typical of what you can find at many different farmer's markets in the country that are maybe, perhaps maybe that lasts a little bit longer in the day. I don't know. So I'm just, this, for me, this is something that I think is a missing part of the market experience that I think might be explored, and it would be interesting to find out from the vendors if this direction could be assisted, because I think would actually help enlarge the market. And we would find people in the community who currently don't really participate in the market. And I'm also, also thinking about conversations that I've had with foreign exchange students or foreign students who've come from other countries who are visitors to our community, who find the prices at the market challenging for their budgets. So I'm just going to say that, think about it. This could be something that would be a beautiful program to evolve if there's something that we can do to help all of the community appreciate the market equally.
Other, other comments or questions? Bill?
Yeah, thanks Natalie. I really appreciate all your, all your work on this. And just to follow up, I guess Dennis kind of triggered something in my mind. One way to make prices lower is just to increase the supply. And I know you've talked over the years about trying to expand it. Has there been any more effort in trying to bring more vendors and expand the, the actual space available? And, or during certain seasons, during high seasons of production of corn or tomatoes, whatever's in season, to try to bring more vendors in so that you have more competition and lower prices?
Obviously, you know, the market is in its 35th year, and it's continued to grow, and it's still growing. And now we're allowing a new sector of, of vendors to participate in the market with the addition of the packaged beer, wine, and spirit sales. You know, and looking back to last season, there, there were only six or seven weeks where we were completely sold out at the market. There was other weeks where we were very, very crowded, but there is still a space here or a space there. And if someone wants to be there and, you know, is approved to be a vendor at the market, I'll try to stick them into those spaces as they're available. My concern is if we expand the physical space of the market, those other weeks during the season where we're not totally full, it will look even more empty. So it's definitely a delicate matter to take into consideration, but we do have the use of Walnut Street to, to place folks. If we do need to expand, that's a, a possibility. So there's all, all different ways to look at it, but that's something we're taking into consideration for sure.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think I was thinking mostly on, you know, just those times when, you know, everything's in season at the same time or, or in the fall, when there's a lot of things in season. And I think one idea I had mentioned to you is maybe to have the food trucks be off-site a little bit, because people can come and go and can pass the food trucks. They have other opportunities other than just walking down the aisles to get to them. So maybe, you know, consider during those busy times to try to bring in some more food type. The, the grower types would be, would just be my only suggestion. I think it's, I think it's a lot of fun to go, and I'm going to keep going.
Thank you.
Diane?
Thank you for the excellent report. I just had a couple of, of questions about the budget. Seems to be, there's always, there seems to be routinely a shortfall between revenues over expenses. Where do we make up the gap when we, when revenues don't cover the expenses? Tom, do you?
I can take a stab at that. I would say, over the last seven or eight years, we actually have generally had a surplus. Now, now this year, we did have a shortfall again primarily because of the increase in admin fees and increased promotional efforts. But if there is a shortfall, this, the Market at the Square budget is embedded within our Economic Development Reserve Fund. And the Market at the Square, again, over the last seven or eight years, has generally had a surplus, and that has resulted in a fund balance. And so we talked this year about how the expenses exceeded revenues. That, a portion of that fund balance would cover that shortfall, but that fund balance has built up to the point where it's sufficient to cover the shortfall for this year. And we've used, in past years, we've done some infrastructure improvements. We did electrical work two or three years ago. The fund balance covered that. So we didn't, we didn't pay for that over time. We just paid for that in one lump sum out of the fund balance. So any shortfall would be covered out of fund balance.
And then, why don't we include the director's salary as part of the expenses?
Well, you, the, the director's salary is 100% paid by Tax Increment Finance District, which is where the market is located. Market is located within TIF district. That said, you could argue that a portion of the director's salary is part of that admin fee. So the director is paid out of TIF, but with the, with the admin fee, you could also say that a portion of that admin fee covers the director's salary as well. So the, the market, in a roundabout way, the market does cover salary through the admin fee.
Okay, and I, and I realize Natalie does marketing as well, so she's not 100% director. So, so you're saying the admin fees covers her salary as Market Director?
I don't know if that's ever been, the, the admin fee covers things like costs for finance to process the various things that finance has to do to keep the market afloat. The vehicles, fuel for vehicles. The, the parking lot that, where the market is located is a parking lot six days a week or six and a half days a week. But some of the infrastructure is specific to the market, so some of that admin fee goes towards infrastructure. So I don't know if anyone has specifically to the cent measured where the admin fee or, or how the admin fee is charged. But the admin fee covers a whole host of things that the general fund does for the market.
Okay. And I had a couple of other questions. One is, in the comments to the survey, people were mentioning that some of the community groups may not be not-for-profit organizations, and instead were LLCs. Is there an effort, do you know if this is a widespread problem, and is there an effort to identify who's? to identify who's a business and who's not operating at the market?
I, I read through each application, and I will approve or waitlist the applicants. And I didn't see there being a, a huge issue or trend that direction last season. Of course, for vendors, we require that they're, that they provide us a Illinois Business Tax Number so that, for tax purposes. And so, that kind of prevents nonprofits from selling at the market, but then it also removes vendors from that area as well. So, there is a, there is a difference between the two groups, the vendors and the community groups. And for the most part, all of the vendors, or vendors and all the community groups are considered community groups, which are nonprofits, or organizations, or, you know, even groups within Urbana High School, like Habitat for Humanity, you know, that might not be a registered nonprofit necessarily through the school, but part of a broader organization nationwide.
Well, I think the concern in the survey anyway was that there were some businesses who actually were in the community group mix. I don't know, but I didn't know if that was a big issue or not.
It's definitely something I'll keep an eye on this season.
And then my last question is, we still have two vacant positions on the Advisory Board?
Yes.
Do you want to announce what those are, in case there's someone watching who might be interested in volunteering?
I'll put a plug in for that. We have two vacant positions on the Market at the Square Advisory Board. One is for a patron, and the other is for an artisan vendor. As a side note, the patron can't be a, an employee or staff of a vendor or participate in the market as a vendor, they just have to come to shop and, and support us. So, and if anyone is interested, they can obtain an application from the city website or from the mayor's office.
Thanks.
And Carol?
I just wanted to ask if there was a, do you have a, a sense of a certain amount or percentage of produce vendors that you want to maintain each year? If you have it as a goal, so that we don't get overrun necessarily with everyone except the produce vendors?
Sure. That's a great question. There are markets that do specify the percentage of, of specific types of vendors within the markets. We haven't done that yet. I, I don't see us doing that this season, per se, but I do try to definitely promote that the market is accepting applications, and we're looking for more grower producers to participate. Last season, and again this season, we, we will send out press releases to the area newspapers, not just in Champaign-Urbana, but within downstate Illinois, as well as in southern Illinois, so that we can attract more, because for us, local means within the entire state. So, and we did get a few new produce vendors last season. There's a program that takes place in partnership with Extension that feeds us a lot of new produce vendors, and that's been a great, a great asset to have.
Anybody else? Carol, could you take the chair for a moment, so I can ask a couple of questions? So, I, I had just two questions. One is, oh, and I, I'll just preface by saying, it looks as though you're doing a great job, so thank you for the report.
Thank you.
The, the, one question is, has, has there been any thought of reconsidering the limitations to participating vendors and, and groups to, in-state? Because we are so close to the Indiana border, and I notice that it's not a big trend, but there is a bit of a drop-off in participation since 2010. And that's either a random fluctuation, or it might be an indication of, of the trend. And my guess would be that it's not that we're doing anything wrong, but that maybe there are more opportunities like this for people that are springing up and essentially competing with us. And I wonder if, if broadening our geography by including neighboring, you know, people from, yeah, groups from western Indiana would be, might be considered?
I, I've heard that comment before, too. That's something that we can look into. I'd like to ask some colleagues on the Illinois Farmers Market Association Board what their thoughts are on that, too, and how they define what local means, whether it's a mileage radius or within the state of Illinois, and see how it works in other markets. But that's something we'll definitely keep in mind.
The, the second question that I have, and actually, this is sort of half for the market, but half actually for Lincoln Square, is the question of, of wireless availability. Because, you know, I'm, I'm one of the people who often will take a couple of hours and take my laptop into a public place and have a cup of coffee and a snack and work there. But, and I would love to go to Piatos sometimes, but there's no wireless. So, and I wonder if that's actually an issue for other people, because I think that otherwise, Piatos is a location and an environment that would be very conducive to that. So, is there a way to, just to do a, you know, reasonably quick, an easy survey to see to what extent more available wireless would enhance both Lincoln Square, I would say particularly, but, so that's wearing your development hat, or your, but also the, also the, the market?
For sure. I, you know, last season was the first time, to my knowledge, that we surveyed patrons like we did at the end of the season, and I think we're going to continue to do more surveys like that this season, and so that's something that we can, a question we can add to ask our, our patrons. And I think that I can probably work with the Urbana Business Association to, to survey patrons in Lincoln Square to see if they also would like wireless availability.
So, that's, that's all, that's all that I have. But, oh, so if I take the chair again, then I'll recognize, Mike?
Hi there. First, I want to say I really enjoy the market, too. My family enjoys it, and I want to apologize to Charlie, because we don't bike to the market, but that's because we buy way too many bags to carry home on our bike.
That's what trailers are for.
Yeah, I know. I got two cars, I'm not going to invest in one of those. So, but anyway, the, I do have a complaint about the market, though, and that's that I take my seven-year-old there, and every week it costs me more money than I want it to, because she finds crafty little cool things that she just has to have. So, so not really a complaint, it's kind of a left-handed compliment. But, hey, real quickly, I wanted to follow up on something that Diane brought up, and, and something that Eric alluded to. And if the answer is not right here, right now, that's fine, you know, an email would suffice. But I just noticed, in looking at the, at the bar graphs that you provided on page 12, and Tom actually alluded to this, too, so maybe I should address the question to him. I frankly don't care who answers it. 2010, 2011 seemed to be a kind of a, an interesting couple of years. Tom talked about surpluses for the last several years, but what I'm seeing is actually deficits. And that all changed in 2010. Now, now the revenues jumped appreciably from 2009 to 2010, and they've, you know, fluctuated a bit, actually increasing the last couple of years, but expenses radically increased in 2011. So, is there, for the new guy on the block, is there a quick answer to that?
I'm still a little bit of the new girl on the block, too, so I've been, you know, reading historically these annual reports, and I think, Tom, do you want to speak to the, it's the market expenses by year chart?
I, we may, we may need to have to get back to you with a detailed answer, but one thing in 2011, I mentioned, we did some infrastructure improvements, specifically electrical, and that, let's see, that expense was $27,879. Now, we, because we had sufficient fund balance, we decided we would just go ahead and pay for that in one year. And so, that may be showing up in the expense numbers, and so skew the numbers just a little bit because of that expense. So, that might be, and that happened in calendar season 2011. And so, maybe we can get back to you with a more detailed answer, but that may be one reason why the 2011 numbers jumped a little bit.
Okay, well, I, I would totally get if that's a one-time expense, and I would be all for, you know, let's pay cash for that. I get that. But the expenses have remained at that level, and in fact, increased another, and I understand the, the additional marketing expense this year, but something got, appeared, there was a one-time expense, but then it appeared to be built in. So, there have been a couple more years of expenditure at that level, and I'm just curious, you know, what, what's driving that? That's all.
Go ahead. We changed some fees.
One, one other, one other expense that has increased significantly is the admin fee, which again, covers the, the services that the city offers through the General Fund, and that's a payment from the market to the General Fund for those services. So, in, just in looking at my spreadsheet here, that admin fee was in the $8,085 through calendar year 10. And again, the numbers, the budget can be confusing sometimes because the city runs on a fiscal year versus the market, which runs on a calendar year, and so we have to try to reconcile the two. In calendar year 11, that admin fee jumped to almost $18,000. And then, in fiscal, I'm sorry, calendar year 12, the admin fee jumped from 18,000 to almost $33,000. And again, that's a fee that the market pays to the General Fund. That fee went up for a variety of reasons, including costs related to processing link and credit cards. It also was an attempt to more accurately reflect the expenses that the market incurs.
You just answered my next question. Was it a better accounting of the actual services that are being provided to the market?
Correct. When we look at vehicle usage and fuel usage and equipment that the city provides and maintenance of the parking lot, that, that 32 is more accurately reflective of what the General Fund does for the market. So, and that, so that admin fee increase has been a big part of those expense increases.
Okay. And you, you talked about, I know that it's not a to-the-penny kind of thing, and I understand that that's probably just not possible, because, you know, a portion of a vehicle, a portion of a, of a person's time, that kind of thing, and it's really hard to nail down. But obviously, the fee is being charged. Therefore, there has to be some kind of detail in order to come up with a figure. I'd like to see the detail on that, and I would assume by the nods of the heads here, everybody might just like to see that, just information, you know, for informational purposes about what the city is contributing toward what I think is a gem of Urbana. So, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be picky, I just would kind of like to see the, the detail behind it, because from a business perspective, I think you look at these things, and I understand that the city is going to always subsidize something like this, because there is an additional economic value to the city, that this doesn't necessarily have to turn a profit, but it's hard for me to not be in that mindset of, how do we make this thing pay for itself? You know? Because then, the added economic benefit to the city is icing on the cake.
Charlie, do you have another?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I think revenues also, you know, you see, there's a bump in revenues in 2010 as well. And I think that's when the, when, when did we bump the, we doubled the vendor, the, I know we, we increased the costs of, of getting a space, right? Yeah, so that was part of it. I, I think, so I recall it was something about, you know, better accounting of the, all the expenses that were involved. You know, what got, what gets charged to TIF, what, you know, what gets charged to the city? And, and as part of that, we also increased the fees that were being charged. And then we added more marketing. We, you know, we, we made a, I think, I recall, we, we added $10,000 to the budget for marketing.
Right.
So.
Well, and a final comment, as a, as a person who, in, in the restaurant business, we also do concessions. We, we, we don't do this one down here, but we do, you know, several in the community. 20 bucks for a space is a value. It is a value. So, you know, here it comes from the conservative business guy over here, but maybe that's something that ought to be visited in order to make this thing pay for itself. But obviously, keeping a balance in mind of, we don't want to hurt the little guys by raising it a couple, a couple bucks, or five bucks, or whatever. But I mean, maybe the vendor fee is something that ought to be looked at, just to make this thing balance out.
Thank you.
Yes, Diane. Diane, yes?
Well, and Mike touched on something else that we, we are looking at, and it wasn't included in your report, but it's the, the idea of what's the economic impact of the market beyond just what's sold at the market. And, and it's really good that we've started, you're using a, a program called Market Umbrella to survey patrons to see where they go after they go to the market. Do they go to downtown? Do they go to Lincoln Square? You know, are there, are those 49, 4,500 people spending time in Urbana, spending money elsewhere, or doing things, not just spending money, but enjoying what we have here? So, so we'll have a better handle on that at the end of this year's season, because we'll have three completed surveys. Is that right?
Correct.
So, we'll get a report on that?
Yes.
Next, at this time next year?
Right.
Okay, so it's a good, a better, we'll have a better handle on the economic impact of the market in the broader downtown.
And Tom?
I, just in, in closing, if we're ready for that?
Yes.
I just want to congratulate Natalie on a great season, and I also want to congratulate her on being elected to the Illinois Farmers Market Association Board very recently, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Yay!
Thank you all. Oh, there's some stickers for you up here, for the Farmers Market.
Moving along, we, the next item of business is Resolution Number 2014-003R, creating a new fund associated with dissolving the special tax allocation fund. And we have a staff report, or staff presentation, I guess, of the, of the item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This item is a resolution requesting to create a new fund in the city's accounting system. This new fund is related to TIF III, which was terminated last month on December 31st. On the date the TIF was terminated, the TIF was holding certain monies in escrow related to property taxes and a redevelopment agreement. Since those monies are still being held, the ordinance that terminated the TIF required that those funds continue to be held, but be held in different accounts, in a new escrow accounts. So, we made that switch, put them in new accounts as of December 31st, but we'd also like to create a separate fund within the city's accounting system to hold those accounts in. So, we'd like to create a new account fund in the county's, in the city's accounting system designated as T14, and put the accounts there. So, staff recommends creation of this fund.
Carol?
I remember us, when we did the closeout on the TIF III, and I thought that we were, I knew we were transferring the funds, but I thought the funds were going to be transferred back to the other taxing bodies, like the school district and the park district, for instance?
That would be in relation to a surplus that may be determined. This isn't that surplus, I think you may be thinking of. This is property taxes paid by Provena Hospital.
Oh, okay.
And monies being held subsequent to, pursuant to a redevelopment agreement that's been in place for a number of years.
Okay. So, I thought this was the remaining balance from TIF III that was unused.
No, this is not that surplus, I think you're thinking of.
Okay.
These are two particular types of monies being held in escrow for specific purposes.
And so, did we transfer the other, the remaining balance from TIF III that was unused from the TIF back to the school districts? The school and the parks?
There is, there is no, I think Tom is going to answer this question.
Okay, so we didn't, we didn't get, because we were told that there was a balance left over, it was not all spent in TIF III.
The, when, the amounts of money there, that are involved here related to Provena tax money and the outstanding redevelopment agreement obligations, if those items were to, or eventually, those items will revolve, resolve themselves. When those items resolve themselves, if there is any of that money left over, that money would then be surplus back to the various taxing districts. But we need to hold on to the money until the tax issues are resolved and the redevelopment agreement is resolved. So, and I'm, I guess the, part of the answer to your question is, there is no balance to surplus, because it's all tied up in those unresolved issues. Those are going into an account, they will wait until the items are resolved, and at that point, there may be money, there may be considerable funds surplus back, but those items need to resolve themselves first.
And what was the, what's the amount this, in relationship to this? And what was the, what's the amount that's in relationship to this resolution that's being put into the escrow?
The total is 11, approximately $11,471,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Charlie?
I have the same question, so I'll move to send it to council with the resolution, with the recommendation for approval.
I'll second. Okay, further discussion? Mike?
Is it absolutely necessary to create a special fund, or is it not within acceptable accounting standards to just create a sub-account that would just, that would be subject to audit as well? I mean, what is, what is so special about another fund, that it can't just be accounted for in a sub-account?
Well, they are being held in two individual accounts within the accounting structure, but with the termination of TIF III, we were advised to terminate the business of the TIF within the TIF in the fund that the TIF was in, but move these funds into a separate place in the accounting structure. And the best way to do that is to create a separate fund to put those monies into. They are each in their own different accounts, but the accounts need to have a home, basically, and the home would be a new fund.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I just ask one other question? In the memo here, it, it doesn't really explain to me, or I don't understand, why there's, the language says, "In addition, these funds could also be used for paying any annual administrative costs incurred by the city staff or professional services." Why the language there? If we have to hold this in escrow until this is resolved, can this money be used just for any other purpose if you move it into this escrow account? I'm not understanding why this is put this way.
I could try to answer that.
Okay.
When, in talking to our attorney who handles TIF issues for us, we mentioned that there were three, three items, or three, three potential expenses that could be incurred after the sunset of the TIF, and those three were, one, unresolved Provena tax money and interest, two, an unresolved redevelopment agreement, and three, some minor administrative costs. For example, there are some staff costs out of TIF III, and some legal fees out of TIF III. And so, those were the three categories, and our TIF attorney said, very specifically outlined in your ordinance, those three items. And so, the ordinance that we brought to city council to sunset the TIF had three categories of funds. Again, Provena taxes and interest, unresolved redevelopment agreement, and administrative costs. Now, those administrative costs are resolved, payroll has been processed, so there's no more staff costs, and legal fees have been processed, so there are no more admin costs out of TIF III. But because the original ordinance included that in the ordinance, I think that's why we included it in this new creation, because it, because it was included in the original ordinance sunsetting TIF III. So, I guess to answer your question, there are no more administrative costs to be paid out of TIF III. Really, it's the two, the two items left at this point, unresolved Provena taxes and interest, and the redevelopment agreement.
I'll ask you a separate question after this, but we can move it to council, and I'll get my other questions answered after this.
Okay, any further discussion of this item?
There is one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, yes.
Okay, so just to be clear, the escrow for Provena, there's not an amount, but there's 11 million total about, and I don't really understand what possible redevelopment would be outstanding if the TIF is over. Those aren't usually, I mean, I want to just make sure that what's set aside for Provena presence isn't used for anything else, until that's resolved.
Maybe I can also chime in. There are essentially two, there were two sources of money. One was the incremental taxes collected, the other was taxes paid by Provena, now presence, which are subject to dispute based on the charitable exemption issues, and when, years, I should say, they can try to claim entitlement to their charitable exemption. So, none of that has been resolved yet. As far as the other sources, there are actually two redevelopment agreements, as well as one or two other entities that developed in the TIF III, that believe that they are, under the two redevelopment agreements and these two other entities, believe they are entitled, under those agreements, to reimbursement of certain costs related to the redevelopment. We are analyzing, I've analyzed those agreements and have some tentative conclusions, which at this point, I would prefer not to share. They're privileged communications, and we're just sorting through that now. We are looking for cooperation from the parties who participated in the redevelopment and all, and seeking information from them to help us resolve. Some of the Provena issues may take quite a while to resolve, and the bulk of the monies are related to that, as opposed to the redevelopment, the money's available to resolve the redevelopment issues.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? I believe we can take a roll call vote on this?
No, this is a voice, this is a council.
Yes, okay. So, all in favor of sending to council with recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any in the negative? Okay, so approved. Next item is Resolution Number 2014-01-004R, authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement providing for the creation of the Champaign County Geographic Information System Consortium. Do we have a presentation on that?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce to council the GIS director, Leanne Brehob Riley, in the audience, and she's here in case there's any questions that I can't answer. But before you is a updated CC Champaign County Geographic Information System Consortium intergovernmental agreement, that's a mouthful. Before you, this is the entity that we contract with, and the member agencies contract with, along with other funding sources, to provide the GIS mapping and support to the cities. It's a very useful tool for us in our daily work, and Leanne, along with her staff, are the ones that provide these services. There was needs to update or revise that agreement, those revisions have been so noted in her attached memo to this document, and the policy committee recently met on the 17th to review this. I represent the city on the policy committee, and we recommended its approval, and now we're going to the respective agencies to seek formal approval for the mayor's signature. Jim Simon and I, and to a lesser extent Sanford Hess have reviewed the agreement, and we recommend that the attached resolution be considered for approval.
Great, yes, Dan.
Can you, I wasn't clear on, how much does Urbana pay on an annual basis to this system? And can you give a couple of examples of how you've used these services over the last few years?
Appendix A, which is literally the last page, has the fees that we pay, and there's a total of $320,000 is total in fees, and Urbana's share, if I'm reading this right, is $25,381. The county share is $200,000, City of Champaign is $42,800, et cetera. So, that's our share, it's based on population for the most part. There's also an additional fee included. As far as how it's used, it's, well, in the aerial mapping, for example, every three years, there's digital mapping that occurs. This coming year, we're looking at six-inch pixels for the whole county, so the aerial mapping updates is a great tool. For example, in our engineering work, we'll use that many times as a base map, depending what the project might be. But the other layers of information, whether we have storm sewers, sanitary sewers, parcel data, tax information, there's, I don't know, Leanne, you could probably tell me, is there 50, 60 layers of information that's available that people can use for planning and engineering purposes?
I don't have an exact count, but it's probably close to that, I would say.
So, I mean, community development has a host of things that they use it for too, but for us, we use it as a resource all the time for our mapping and assigning the attributes to different parts of our infrastructure, and we can retrieve that data and keep trends and know what materials and diameters and slopes and all sorts of information that's available that are, tells us about our infrastructure that's out there. That's, you know, some examples.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I've seen CD use it, you know, when they bring up the value of a property and different owners and whatnot, that's part of that, that's all part of the GIS, and you can click a bunch of layers in there. And I think a lot of it's available to the public as well.
Okay. One of the reasons I'm asking is that the Illinois Municipal League meeting a couple of years ago, I went to one session where a community gave a presentation, and they used GIS as the basis for, every single address in their city was in their database, and then everything about that one property was linked to the GIS, so they could, they could tell, property inspections, they could tell where the sewers were, they could tell, I think the fire service calls, everything was linked to each property via that GIS system. Is that, is this the foundation for something like that happening here? I'm just thinking in terms of coordinating information.
It is. We do have our, all the parcels have addresses, but actually, what you witnessed and what you touched on is something that Sanford and several department heads want to talk to council about later this year in the budget cycle. We really, really need to update our work order and asset management system. There's a multi-departmental need, and what we use now is maybe 19th century.
Antiquated.
I was gonna say 20th century, but it's, by today's technology, 19th century. We really need to update it, it's costly, but we don't have all those capabilities that probably you saw we could, but we have to have that software tool. So, we really need, and I'll just speak for Public Works, a work order, asset management system upgrade.
Thanks.
Charlie?
Okay, to follow up on the, on the budget issue, the numbers on Appendix A are from 2003 and 2004, says plus inflation, so, I mean, right now, you know, in 2004, the budget was 320, almost 321,000. What's your budget today, or expect to be in 2014, do you know?
I think our, what you're probably looking at is the membership contributions are probably around 320,000, so that's not the complete budget, because we do get monies coming in through other means, other than just the seven-member agency. So, our total budget, I think in this coming fiscal year, is a little high, because the county is switching over to a calendar year, fiscal year, so we have an extra month in there. So, I think our budget this year is around 500,000.
But our share is still in the 25,000.
Yeah, your share, I believe, is still less than 30.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, the real question I have is, I don't understand this dropping the Open Meetings Act item here. Bill tried to explain it in email, and I still didn't follow it. This specifically, it says, "The policy committee shall adhere to requirements of the State Opens Meeting Act." Bill says that, going to continue being under the Open Meetings Act. My understanding is that as a publicly appointed agency, you're subject to the Open Meetings Act anyway. Is the policy committee still going to be Open Meetings Act?
Yeah, by Illinois state law, the policy committee is...
So, this is a redundant sentence, in other words.
Correct, right.
So, that's why it's going out.
That's why it's, that's why it's being struck, yeah.
Okay, thank you. It's a redundant sentence, okay.
So, other questions? Carol, can you take the chair? I have one question.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. I noticed that the, one of the, one of the functions was to assist in criminal investigations. So, is that actually an active thing? Do you, do you actually participate in active investigations, or do you just, or do you give background information to law enforcement officials, or what's the nature of that connection?
Primarily with law enforcement. So, for example, the sheriff's department, they have computers in their car with the GIS system in it, so it just assists, it's just a tool that they have to assist them to figure out, you know, for example, who the taxpayer of a particular property is, or just to help them locate a property, so they can do an address, you know, if they are not familiar with where that particular property is, they can type in an address, and the map will zoom to that and kind of give them an idea of how to get there and so forth. And we've had, we've had offices come in just to get aerial printouts, you know, if they're planning a, you know, the one I'm thinking of is not probably appropriate, but, you know, if they know there's drugs in an area and they want to, you know, plan out how to, the best way to get to that particular property, or to get to the house, you know, they'll come in and ask for aerial photos, things like that. So, we don't directly assist, you know, we're just kind of a tool to help them.
So, this next question is half facetious, but half serious, because like Bill, I'm a card-carrying member of the ACLU. Do you envisage ever deploying drones?
I think they'd be way too expensive.
Okay.
And I did want to also mention that the information that's used at MetCAD, the dispatch center, so that all, a lot of the base of that, the addresses, the street center lines, things like that, those come from the consortium, so we assist law enforcement in that way too. Thank you.
Okay, I'm done. So, yes, Charlie?
I move to send to council a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, this is very cool stuff. So, the next item is 2014-01-005R, Resolution Authorizing Construction Engineering Services Agreement for Illinois Jobs Now Funds, Construction Engineering and Participating Construction Agreement for 1.27 miles of South High Cross Road.
Mutton, and this one together.
Mr. Smythe is saying that he thinks that we could do these next two, consider these next two an omnibus fashion, and that certainly seems to make sense. So, Bill, if you can direct your presentation to both items simultaneously.
I will. The project, the High Cross Road improvements, has been under design and discussion here for the last several years. This is the impacts to High Cross Road, Illinois Route 130, by anticipation of the Menards 300 acres of full improvements. IDOT has worked with the developer and had determined certain amounts of roads improvements that needed to be completed, and the city was fortunate to receive Illinois Jobs Now capital bill money to do this work on an IDOT route. The roadway project involves essentially two lanes in each direction on High Cross Road from University Avenue, which is also US 150. Improvements to that intersection, including the legs, eastern and western legs of that intersection, which incidentally will connect to the resurfacing of US 150 to where that project starts, all the way to St. Joe. And that's an independent, separate project, but they will touch near this intersection. And then south to, the South Terminus is south of Florida Avenue Extended, so there'll be a slight stub out into the property line of the future Florida Avenue, but when you take these four lanes with the left turn lane and taper them further south, it's about another quarter mile south of the intersection, hence the 1.27 mile length of the project. Also, in our interest... Also, in our interest is the amount of money, and the project will include upgrading Washington Street, which is now a chip and seal road between Pfeffer Road and High Cross Road. So we will be able to address and rebuild Washington Street. So this will be a real help for the city in using these expenses of that stretch of Washington Street. So, I attached over two sheets, an Exhibit A, that gives you a graphic of what the roadway will look like when it's done, and the plans and specifications are done and it's on a February 28th letting. So that's good. That's construction this year and it's a big project. So, to the punchline, we need to provide some dollars to allow Crawford, Murphy and Tilly to provide construction engineering services and also to cover some expenses that occurred during the design phase, which I outlined in that second paragraph. Their expenses will be covered by part of the Illinois Jobs Now money. The lion's share of the construction engineering, construction observation work will be done by IDOT personnel at their expense. So that's another real big plus because that's multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars that IDOT and their staff are going to contribute towards this project. So, anyway, it's a recommendation for approval here, and then we need a budget amendment ordinance because what happens is we will pay Crawford, Murphy and Tilly, and then we will seek reimbursement from the state once we pay those bills. So the cash will flow through the city and hence the need for a budget amendment ordinance for the fees only, but the construction dollars will be paid from IDOT directly to the contractor. We will not see those dollars.
Questions or comments? Uh, Charlie?
Does IDOT have the money to pay us on a fairly timely basis?
They do, and they have been in other projects also.
Okay. I move to send both of these items, the ordinance and the resolution, to council for approval where they can be handled separately at that time.
You'll need a motion to handle them.
I'll just do them separately then. I'll move resolution to council with a recommendation for approval.
Further discussion?
Just one question.
Yes.
Since I know we're going to get the question, and Bill asked it earlier, why, people are going to wonder why we're doing this instead of fixing Windsor Road. So can you please just clarify that for the public?
I'll be happy to. Well, really, the straight, simple answer is, is the money was directed toward this project by IDOT. And so this goes back to 2009 and when the capital bill had come about, and the answer gets complicated a little bit, and you may recall, or some of you in council may recall, originally there was two and a half million dollars targeted for High Cross Road, and there was five point seven or whatever million dollars targeted for interchange improvement on Interstate 74, and that was going to be a three-location study at the existing Trumpet Interchange, Cottonwood Drive and one mile east of Cottonwood Drive. Through internal discussions, staff discussions with council, discussions with our elected representatives, and ultimately with the Secretary of Transportation, we asked that money be moved to this project, so a total of eight point four million dollars. And everyone was on board and approved that, and we felt that we're not going to be talking about a future interchange in a long, long time if we don't see better and more growth in the east part of Urbana. So we felt that it was more prudent to do this. So that's where all that money came from. Unfortunately, none of it is directed at Windsor Road.
Yes, Dennis. And one of the things that we've done in the past through use of federal or state money was the extension of a side path, a multiple-use path from Windsor Road North on I-30. And it doesn't look like, or I guess I'll just ask you, is there any provision in this funding or this engineering for the extension of that side path farther north on this, on this development that we're talking about here?
No, there isn't, and primarily, we don't want to get ahead and put a side path in in addition, in advance of the Menard work. We really need the Menard work. They go hand in hand. There's a lot of earthwork, work that has to happen, detention basins and their projects that have to occur, and quite honestly, if we move forward, we would be ripping it out when Menards did their work, so we need to really work.
So this is a pavement, a street pavement particularly, and I would say that it's a real benefit to the city that we're going to be able to do some improvements on Washington Street as well because that's a street that dearly does need some attention.
Right. I will say, you know, Menards hasn't committed. They haven't indicated when they will build a store and do their developments. So publicly, it may look unusual that we have this wide highway, four lanes in each direction, and the store hasn't broken ground yet. We hope, and I know they're very thankful that this isn't part of a city Menard expense, this eight million dollars, but I know it certainly makes their cash flow and their economics much better to pull the trigger at some point with the store, but they have not given us that indication. They have been very cooperative in this project. There's been some additional right-of-way we needed from them, and they've been very cooperative the whole way through.
So we're just being patient to see when they begin to do something for?
Hopefully, when it's done, we'll get some good news, but I don't know that from them.
Charlie, can you take the chair? I have one comment. And I guess that the only person this would be directed to is Mike because the mayor's not here and our controller's not here, but I think this really, I think Diane's question really points up the fact that our budget reporting, all of our financial reporting, all of our public documents have to be very, very clear about which expenditures are being paid for by Urbana taxpayers and for which expenses we are a pass-through, for example, for something from the state. Because otherwise, there's going to be a lot of wildly misinformed public discussion about trends in our expenditures, as there was last year. So please carry that message as strongly as possible. Thank you. Okay, and now, now I'll ring you guys, Charlie.
I was, I'm just going to point out, you know, also 130 is a state highway as opposed to Windsor, which is not. You know, maybe we need to get Windsor designated a state highway.
Yes, Mike?
Bill, can you remind me, what's, what's the timeline on all of this?
The letting or bid opening is February 28th. I would say usually it's about a 60-day minimum time period before, you know, the dirt starts moving. So I would say around May 1st, hopefully there's an awarded contract, and until we know from the contractor and the schedule, but I think a majority of this would be done this construction season, but it's a big enough project that my sense is restoration and some aspects of it may carry over until spring of next year, but when we get that exact schedule, we'll know more specifically. But the bulk of this work will be this construction season.
And does the city dictate the phases in which this will happen, or is that part of the bid, or is that part of the state design? How is that figured out?
Yep. The staging is dictated by IDOT. It's their route. The plans reflect the staging. There will be construction, excuse me, there'll be construction going on while traffic will be moving on a portion of the roadway, so we're not detouring or closing the roadway. But there's fairly intricate staging and phasing of this project, and of course, that takes a little bit longer to do than if you could just close the road and build it all at one time. But IDOT definitely stages that. I will say, and since you brought it up, Washington Street now will be closed totally.
That was my next question.
Has to be. It's too narrow to keep it open. So there will be, for those who go to Walmart or what have you, that, between Pfeffer Road, now the intersection itself will allow some movement, like the north leg and the west leg, but from there west to High Cross, it'll be one closure. When that's completed, then Washington Street, the east leg, east of the intersection, will be closed from like Cottonwood over. Now, there's no, very few residences along there.
Right.
But that will take several months, too. So each half, particularly the west half, will take three, four months, closure, opening up, then that east leg. So that will be a total closure now. The signage, we'll have press releases, all that sort of thing will happen, but if you typically use Washington Street when work starts, it will be closed for east and west traffic. You'll need to use either University Avenue or even Windsor Road or cut through Stone Creek to get to the east from town.
Okay, thanks.
Further, further discussion? Yes, Dan.
Sorry to prolong this, but just, just combining this project with the funding that is funding Olympian Drive over the railroad tracks to the intersection, can, how much is that adding up to now?
That's thirteen million dollars, that project, and just a quick update. You know, we hope next month to receive good news from the Illinois Commerce Commission toward the end of February, February 22nd or that week or so, but we're, you know, still waiting on that. But if we have favorable response from the Commerce Commission and the draft order is favorable, and the five commissioners will have to consider that now, that's the draft order from the administrative law judge to the commissioners, then there's a few other dotting i's, crossing some t's, and we would be looking for an April letting, IDOT letting for Olympian Drive, an April letting. So, again, two, three months after that date, we would be looking to break ground in the summer for Olympian. Now, that's a two-year project now, a construction project, but that would be thirteen million dollars.
So the two together is about twenty million dollars of these two?
Yes.
Yes, Bill?
And I'll prolong it a little longer, just so, in case you're worried that we might be getting more than our share of the Illinois Jobs Now funding, I did look up a little bit. That's the same program that's funding thirty-eight million dollars for the Lincoln's Challenge in Rantoul, and it's funding sixty, or funded sixty million for the Pettiscale Computer Lab, fifty-seven million for Lincoln Hall, and forty-five million for the ECE Building. So I wouldn't say we're getting more than our share.
Point well taken. Okay, any other, any other discussion? So in favor, and there is a resolution on the floor for the, for the contract agreement. So in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. And now finally, there is a, we have the construct, we have to vote separately on the.
I move the ordinance that pays for this.
Any discussion on that? In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nobody opposing? So on that conservative note that we will not authorize anything unless we pay for it, meeting is adjourned.